You're on the record.
All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 21, and the time is 9:00 a.m. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for our open business meeting. We have all three commissioners with us, also in the room with us, and we'll start with up here in front with Bob.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Beth Mon, Treasure.
Jennifer Phillips, Ada County Operations.
Brad Smith with the Ada County Sustlers Office.
Phil McGrane, Ada County Clerk.
Kurt Hut, Ada County Solid Waste.
And Steve Boinger, Ada County Paramedics.
All safely distanced six feet away, and then some. And then also with us, we have Don. I'm going to go ahead.
Judge John Vailo, Senior Judge.
Okay, and Don? We have Don Burns with us, but apparently she can't hear us. So we'll just acknowledge that she's with us. All right, so let's go ahead with changes to the agenda. Commissioner Laciando, would you mind making a change to the agenda so we can move under miscellaneous number three, the scales of justice bass tournament, to the beginning of the agenda? Apparently, she can't hear me either. Can you hear me? Can anyone hear me?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Malloy.
I will make that motion. I move that we I move that we take the item, let me find it here, item three under miscellaneous and move it to the top of the order in the agenda.
Thank you. Diana, you want a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it. Motion carries. It's moved to the beginning of the agenda. Judge Vailo, thank you for joining us this morning. You sent an email
Yes, ma'am.
this last week. Do you want to go ahead, since we're on the record now, for the public to and for the other commissioners to understand what your position is on the Bass Tournament this year?
All right, do you want me to read that email into the record?
That would be lovely, thank you.
Okay. On Easter Sunday morning, April 12, I sent an email to the chairman of our Scales of Justice Committee. We are scheduled to to hold the Scales of Justice Bass Tournament for the 16th or 17th straight year on September 27 of 2020 at CJ Strike Reservoir. And I sent an email that says this, quote, "With regret, I have reached the opinion that the 2020 Scales of Justice Tournament should be canceled due to the coronavirus pandemic for the following reasons. Number one, as the Easter Sunday morning stats indicate, there are 531,000 diagnosed cases of COVID-19 and 20,646 deaths in the United States, including four cases and 27 deaths in Idaho. Number two, the cure and appropriate protections from this disease remain uncertain. Number three, assuming 30 juveniles might participate in 2020, the tournament would assemble approximately 125 people for the event. Number four, national, state, and local state home orders may exist on the date of the tournament. Number five, the Idaho Supreme Court, Board of County Commissioners of Ada County, Ada County Juvenile Court Services, and Bass Federations may not support the 2020 tournament because of liability for contracted illness. Number six, insurance coverage may be impossible to obtain. Number seven, voters, volunteers, and staff may be too partisan or financially unable to do so. Number eight, parents of juveniles may refrain from allowing their children to attend. Number nine, Department of Fish and Game in Lake County may revoke our permits to hold the tournament. Number 10, Idaho Power Company may close that Number 10, Idaho Power Company may close access to Scott Park. Number 11, governing authorities may close the boat ramps for public use. And number 12, and finally, risk of infection to those who might participate in the 2020 tournament remains unknown. And I just had gotten to the point, and that was on April 12, of considering that there were so many different difficulties and unknowns for us to continue to prepare for that tournament and continue to seek sponsorships and send out invitations to the 18 other juvenile departments in the invited counties. And one reason after another, including like sending out invitations to the individual voters to participate. And then somewhere down the road, with us having so many unknowns, one of these difficulties that I enumerated could raise its head and make it impossible for the tournament to go forward, even if we made the decision now to do so. And so, obviously, the statistics have greatly increased since the models and the curving for the infections are unknown. There's no vaccine. And the liability, if someone came and got and became infected from someone of that assemblage of 125 or more people together, could create a liability that none of us would want to be compelled to address. And so, for those reasons, I have made a motion to our committee to cancel the tournament regretfully. And we got Director Burns a copy of this concern. And she had the foresight to ask that you could put this matter on your agenda today. And so, that's kind of where I am about it. It just seems like it, there are so many different reasons, let alone I subsequently discovered that at least the Idaho Bass Federation President of that Bass Fishing Tournament Federation has indicated to me that, for one thing, the Idaho Department of Fish and Game has revoked tournament permits from the spring, at least until June 1st. And I guess they'll reevaluate at that time for events later in the year. But, you know, one thing after another, if it fell, let alone us not knowing, and I'm confident that we're not going to be totally in the clear by September 27, that it just sadly doesn't make sense for us to pursue the event in 2020 and that we should return any donations from charitable organizations that were given to us for this year so they can redirect those funds to places that need them more. I just sadly got to the opinion that we needed to pull the plug on it this year and start focusing on 2021. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge Vailo. We certainly appreciate all your efforts and empathize with you. This has always been such a wonderful tournament and for the kids as well as the community. So we appreciate your thoughtfulness in this. And with that, I'll turn it over to either commissioner if they have any comments at this time.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Laciando.
Thanks. Well, thank you, Judge Vailo, so much for your thoughtful work on this, especially over the years. Unfortunately, we aren't able to do it at this time. I think you sort of pointed out to the larger issue, which is that of all the things we're going to be able to sort of roll back into in the more normal semblance, large gatherings are probably going to be the last thing that we're able to put back online in all of our nonprofit organizations and charitable activities, many of which rely on larger fundraising events. So we're all going to have to get creative on how we do that moving forward. And if you would like to look for some kind of creative way to raise funds, that's something that I'd be happy to support you with on a go-forward basis.
Thank you, Commissioner Laciando.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any further comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Is this Commissioner Malloy?
I would hope, it is Commissioner Malloy. I would hope, I would hope that perhaps maybe they can come up with some type of virtual fishing tournament offline or something of that nature.
Thank you for your suggestion. We lost your visual, Patrick. I don't know what happened, but we had you up there and now your visual is gone.
I had it off for a moment.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so with that, we don't need a motion on this, but I feel, Judge Vailo, that the board is 100% behind you in your decision, and this is the wise and prudent thing to do. So once again, we appreciate you very much.
Commissioner, thank you. Then we will move forward in canceling the event for this year and looking forward to 2021. And we will see if there's anything in an alternative that we could do in September. But we'll have to let time unfold to see what's transpiring. But I think with the director's support, we will indicate to our committee that the Board of County Commissioners concurs that we should postpone the actual tournament or cancel the actual tournament this year and look forward to 2021. And I thank all of you for your wonderful and continued support of the event to help these young people. I trust and hope that we can push forward next year. Thank you all very much, and I'll get off the phone now and allow you to continue with your meeting. Thanks for the kindness of taking this up for me, and I appreciate it. Everyone, say aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Vailo. Appreciate that. All right, next.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I will need, bye. I'll need a motion for, to remove the unfinished business from the table, please. Commissioner Malloy?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Malloy, do you want to make that motion?
Yes, I move to, I move to remove, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
It's a tongue twister. Okay, we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Diana, you, we can't hear you.
Second.
Okay, there we go. All right. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it. Motion carries. So we're going to take up, we're going to open the public hearing on resolution number 2507, resolution to sell Barber Dam and associated property at the private sale. This was tabled from last week on 4/14, so Commissioner Malloy could meet with staff and get some clarification, and I believe we added the language to include the parcels distinctly within the document. So with that, Commissioner Malloy, does that satisfy your request? And are we ready to make a motion?
Madam Chair, it does, and I want to thank both my fellow commissioners for allowing me that time and the clarity in the resolution for full transparency as well. I would move to
Before we, yeah, before we move it, though, before we make a motion, just want to make sure. Is there anyone here to testify? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Now you can make the motion. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve resolution 2507 as listed on the agenda.
You have a second?
I'll second, and then I'd like to discuss.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to clarify for the public record that this resolution allows us to enter into conversations where we might look at selling the dam, but we are not at this time yet selling said dam.
Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Laciando. Any further discussion amongst the board members? Hearing none? Okay, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, looks like Patrick said aye as well. I just have it. Motion carries. Next up, new business. I'm going to open the public hearing on resolution number 2508 to grant the Greenbelt property to the city of Boise. And is there anyone here to make comment or testify? Scott Kolberg on the line? Nope, okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any discussion amongst the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Malloy.
I know that there, as related to Barber Dam, this is somewhat connected to the Barber Dam property, as I understand it. And this is property that I believe was purchased with federal transportation dollars. And I know in the resolution, it specifies that it will remain bicycle access along the Greenbelt, which protects the county from having to repay, potentially repay those funds. And that if the city of Boise is not going to maintain it, it will revert back to us. If they don't maintain it for that purpose.
Yep, that is that
Then it will revert back to us.
That is correct, yep.
You got it.
Excellent.
Okay, and so that'll just require, I think, the chair for myself to sign a quick claim date in order to do that. So any other further discussions? Okay, we closed the public hearing, so we're ready to take a motion on that. Mr. Laciando?
Yes, Madam Chair, I need to approve resolution number 2508 as listed on the agenda.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it. Motion carries. Next up, we're going to open the public hearing on resolution number 2509 to repeal and replace resolution 2116. This is policies and procedures for Ada County's non-medical indigent program under title 31, chapter 34 of the Idaho Code. Is there anyone here to testify? Commissioner Laciando, would you mind? I think this was an effort that you put forth, and it has some, something to do with Jesse Tree, just for the public record.
Sure. Actually, this is something that Dave Rosscheck from Legal and Siobhan Lewis from Indigent Services spearheaded. I just sort of came along for the ride. Just taking the opportunity, there, you set forth in Idaho Code, there's specific requirements for us in terms of indigent program, but there's also policies. And this was an attempt to somewhat streamline some of our policies to make it more user-friendly for clients so that they are not overburdened, I would say, with paperwork. So thank you to Siobhan and to Dave for their comments.
Great, it looks like it was quite thorough. Did you have a chance to look at it, Commissioner Malloy?
I did. I kind of have a question about what exactly was changed. I don't know that I have a total answer on that to date, but I do understand that it is streamlining the process.
So on resolution 2509, there are areas that were either revised or removed, and there are 19, I think they're all listed separately. Yes, there are 20, 20 different items that were either revised or removed on this resolution. I think it's fairly clear. If you need more time on that, otherwise I'll go ahead and we'll close.
I did read through it, but I read what was being proposed. I guess I was just curious about the old language, which is less important.
Okay, understandably so. So one of the things that we can look at as we bring Commissioner Malloy up to speed on some of this is for, especially for legal staff, I think when we're changing things to give us a redline document. And with a redline document, then Commissioner Malloy can see what is actually being changed. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, open it up for board discussion. Any further discussion from the board? We'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Commissioner Laciando.
Yes, Madam Chair, I need to approve resolution number 2509 as listed on the agenda.
You have a second? And you have a motion, a second? All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it. Motion carries. Next, we're going to open the public hearing on resolution 2511. That's 2511, resolution for outside counsel. Anyone here to testify? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and we will close the public hearing. And this is for resolution to retain outside counsel on a charge claim. Any discussion amongst the board? Not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Laciando?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify. I'm sure people might wonder why we would be seeking outside counsel. And as I understand it, there are two parties named in this lawsuit, and if they are both represented by our House Counsel, their interests could be in conflict. And so that's the purpose for this particular resolution.
That is correct, yep. To avoid conflict of interest. Thank you for that. You want to go ahead and make the motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve resolution number 2511 as listed on the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, a second? I believe I closed the public hearing, if I remember right. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys, have it. Motion carries. All right, next we have a proclamation designating the week of April 19 through the 25th as National Crime Victims Rights Week. I am going to ask the lovely Judge Rebecca Mon to read the proclamation into the record, if you wouldn't mind.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Here's someone else's voice besides my own.
All right. All right. The Board of County Commissioners Ada County State of Idaho proclamation to designate the week of April 19 through, April 19 through April 25, 2020, as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas, laws have been passed at the local, state, and federal levels that have established essential rights for victims of crime. And whereas, the Idaho Constitution and Idaho Code provide victims with meaningful ways to participate throughout the criminal justice process. And whereas, the rights of crime victims are best protected when all participants in the criminal justice process are properly educated about victims' rights. And whereas, advocacy by and for victims of crime is itself a form of seeking justice. And whereas, Ada County is dedicated to assisting victims of crime through its establishment and support of the Faces of Hope Victim Center, which provides comprehensive services to victims of sexual assault, child abuse, and domestic violence. And whereas, the Ada County Prosecutor's Office is dedicated to assisting all victims of crime through its victim advocacy and restitution programs. And whereas, National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit and to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime. And whereas, Ada County is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim service providers, and bringing hope and healing to all victims and survivors.
Thank you, Beth, appreciate that. We just have such a wonderful support staff over there, Faces of Hope. And I know Jan Bettens and Jean Fisher just dedicate so much of their time. And they're very passionate about the work that they do. And I'd just like to extend our gratitude to not only Jan and Jean Fisher, but also all the staff over there. It's quite a partnership. Faces of Hope, as you know, probably is one of the top in the nation that actually has such a collaborative model. So we're really lucky to have them here. Is there anyone with us? I can't see Faces on a couple of these phone call folks. Is Jan with us? Anyone with us from Faces or from the prosecuting's office or Tony's office? No? Okay, we'll go ahead. And then Commissioner Laciando, did you want to say a few words?
No, I just think, you know, this is, it's always important to recognize this, but especially important right now, given that we know calls for service are up as it relates to domestic violence and child abuse. The sad reality is that home is not only safe for everyone. I think it's really important for us to continue to get the word out that we're still here, we're still available to support people in need.
And Commissioner Malloy, have you had an opportunity to visit, do a tour of Faces of Hope yet?
I have not yet.
Yeah, I think that's something we should have put as a priority on your agenda, and it'd be a great month to head over there and take a look at the services they provide. So with that, Commissioner Laciando, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm going to move to approve the proclamation as listed on the agenda and designate the week of April 19 through the 25th, 2020, as National Crime Victims Rights Week.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it. Motion carries. Thank you so much for that. Next, we're moving to licenses. Commissioner Malloy, would you like to make a motion on the licenses, please?
I forgot to unmute. I will.
That's fine.
I move to ratify and approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one new license, five license transfers, and 38 license renewals, and authorize the chair to sign the document on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it. Motion carries. And looking at this license list, it looks like there's a lot of businesses on there that may be struggling. And I know there's a new program, GEM, something that's, I believe Senator Rich is trying to spearhead to really encourage folks to go out there and use the curbside service and delivery service and buy gift certificates and all those sorts of things. So we'd like to really encourage all of our staff and the public to do so as well. Okay, let's move on to the clerk's office. Come on up. How are you, Phil?
Good. Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Just, I guess, a quick reminder in terms of licenses this year. This is the renewal season, as you guys have obviously witnessed. Back in January, we adjusted the renewal deadline. So typically, it would be the end of this month, and coming up quickly, but now it will be the end of May. So, and that's not even due to COVID. That's just, was a different process we were working on, but it's coincidentally beneficial to everybody right now. So we will still see a lot of renewals going into the next month. And I'm sure, as you already mentioned, many of these businesses are shut down, and it'll be an interesting process as we get towards the end. Also, probably no surprise to you, I know you guys have seen some of our press releases and some of the coverage and stuff. The election is on, I guess, our office is drowning in elections, is the best way to put it. We've got just so many requests coming in. It's fascinating today. So we, after some of our issues late last week with the errors on a couple of the ballots, we've got those corrected. New ballots are being issued today to all of those voters so they can recast their ballots. And we've got a whole process to find for that. But today, we are actually mailing out 34,000 ballots. That's just today. To put that into perspective, only 35,000 people voted four years ago for this same election.
And that's just in one day.
This is just today's mailing. It is, mind you, it's an accumulation of a couple of days' requests that have kind of come together. That's why it's so large. But we've mailed over 51,000 absentee ballots so far. So needless to say, there is plenty of awareness, at least among the high-frequency voting population. There is another mailing that's going out this week from the Secretary of State's office that will include absentee ballot request forms. They're just mailing to, they're mailing to all registered voters who have not currently requested an absentee ballot. So those 50,000 will be excluded, but the other 210,000 registered voters in Ada County will get pre-completed absentee request forms that they can sign and mail in. So this election is So this election is like nothing I've handled before. And I've handled a lot of elections before.
Phil, are you hearing anything back from the candidates? This has got to be so strange for anyone to be running during this.
I don't know if I hear anything bad, but it's caused, yeah, no, but it's caused anxiety in different ways. People, campaigns are not like they used to. You know, knocking on doors right now and shaking hands is not the appropriate way to campaign. If you observe, it's kind of interesting out in the community. There's way less yard signs, way less attention on that front. I do know a lot of candidates, we have a, we launched what we call our candidate portal this election. We've always had an email list that we send candidates information, but we've actually created a portal so that they can easily get information and follow along with what we're doing. I do know some of them are anxious. We did, knowing that today's mailing was going to be so huge, we did share information in advance to give them a little breathing room because, as you can imagine, if you're hypothetically a county commissioner candidate, 34,000 absentees in one day is a lot. And so there's, yeah, candidates are struggling. Some have a better plan, figured out, others, you know. I actually think in terms of candidate perspective, one of the more interesting mailers I got was from Congressman Mike Simpson, who was chasing it, but rather than a traditional campaign mailer, he just sent COVID-19 advice and stuff to go on, which I thought was pretty wise in his part, right? Given the circumstances. But, yeah, we've got, we've only had 63 ballots returned. So out of the 51,000 we've mailed, 63 have come back. But we're expecting, here today, we'll probably get 4,000 back or so. And we'll, it'll start, we're shifting gears. We have, because this question's come up about, you know, we're reduced workforces. We've pulled a number of the court clerks that aren't as busy and they're all working out of elections. We need all hands on deck. Typically, we would hire a lot of temps from our temp agency. Instead, we've repurposed a number of clerks to be out there. And also, any new employees we have coming on board, rather than trying to teach them their new job in the midst of all this, we're just training them how to do elections for the remainder of the election. So that has, we've been doing other things. I know you guys have interacted with me on other fronts, budget, you know, and some of the other things. But right now, a lot of it is focused on the election.
Any questions? Thank you.
I just wanted to give a moment of thanks, if I can. Phil, I just really appreciate, I know I shared this with you on the phone the other day, but I really appreciate the transparency that your office can be used to put forward. You know, when you're going to make a mistake, you own it, you move on and rectify it. And I also am hearing a lot of really positive feedback about the prepaid postage. You know, other counties didn't make that available on absentee return and maybe they weren't able to. But I just think it really speaks well that, you know, you shouldn't have to neither pay for a stamp or even, you know, try to go find something at the grocery store to vote. So I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you. It's been a scramble, to say the least, especially things like that prepaid postage. But all in all, things are going fairly well, it's just the volume is immense. So we're doing everything we can to make sure this goes smoothly for everybody. And there's still a lot of time left between now and election day.
Be interesting to track it.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you, really appreciate that. All right, next up, I'll need a motion for the Claims Journal. Commissioner Malloy?
Yes, let me get there. Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated April 17th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. Next up, Commissioner Malloy, I'll need a motion on the personal action forms.
Madam Chair, I actually would like to make a motion that we pull out the 12 leaves with pay and six miscellaneous and deal with those individually.
All right, do we have a second? Do you want to give us a reason why?
I want to, I understand all the merit and pay increases as they are. I'm having a difficult time authorizing, as I understand, these 12 leaves with pay. These are employees that are unable to perform their task but receiving their full payment, their full pay at this point.
Yes, is this something that you would like? Go ahead, Commissioner Lachlando.
You know, I think one of the challenges here, or kind of the realities, is that with the Families First Act, we have some new requirements in terms of what we have to do for employees during this time. So some of those leaves with pay are just your standard, you know, FMLA or what have you, but some of them are under the new Families First Act requirements.
So we'll pull those out, so I'll go ahead, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Malloy.
And I guess that's where I wanted to discuss them individually as opposed to I have a full understanding of all the other, you know, merit and performance increases.
Okay, so what we can do is, let's go ahead and take a motion then for the rest of those remaining, leaving out the 12 leaves with pay and the six miscellaneous. Do you want to go ahead and make a motion on the remaining ones? Or Commissioner Lachlando, would you prefer that we make a motion on the entire grouping here? And I could second that and then Mr. Malloy or Commissioner Malloy could go speak with HR to get clarification. I'm open either way.
Yes, let's do that because we're going to have, I mean, this will be kind of a continuing issue potentially. So, Madam Chair, I move to approve the Personal Action Forms as listed on the agenda, including one conditional pay increase, seven introductory period pay completions, 12 leaves with pay, six miscellaneous, one post certification increase, one salary increase, four, seven increases, shared pick lane, and then the summary sheet may be on file in the Commissioner's office.
Okay, Commissioner Malloy, I'm taking that you're not going to second that, is that correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Malloy?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, those nay?
I will abstain on this vote.
And Commissioner Malloy abstains on this one. All right, eyes have it, motion carries. And then Commissioner Malloy, if you wanted to get with Cassie and HR, she can walk you through these.
I will do that, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Okay, Assessor's Office, up next. Hello, Brad, and we also have Bob Lane on. Hello, Bob.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Morning.
Hopefully everyone can hear me.
I think so.
Bob, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, last time you couldn't hear me. I was just actually thinking, when Phil brought up the fact that they're using prepaid postage, I thought it was a great idea. And just a couple of days ago, we had an envelope that came in for our property tax reduction program and it was covered with stamps. And they were six-cent stamps from 1972. And it just made me really sad to think that somebody had to dip into stamps that are almost 50 years old to get their application to us for, you know, property tax savings. But it just goes to show how desperate some people are. And that might be something that we might look into for our property tax assistance. So, anyway, in regards to property tax reduction, last year, we were at 4,156 at the end of the year for the deadline. This year, we're only at 3972. But the good news is that we still have almost two months left to go. So we're real hopeful we'll hit our 4,400 to 5,000. So we're on, even though we're behind, we're on track for that. In regards to what's happening around the office, we are starting to prepare for, even though we have no idea when it will happen, but we are putting measures into place as far as working with Bob, getting Plexiglas set up for DMVs and masks and tape and ideas on our rooms and stuff, how we're going to deal with. So we're starting to really kind of get, make sure everything's in place so when the time happens, we can be prepared.
And you're working with Bob Perkins on that?
Correct, he came over and they're working at, for all the DMV, all of our off-site locations, taking measurements and making sure. Part of the problem is the timing. Obviously, you know, everyone is kind of going for the same thing, so it can cause supply problems. But we're hopeful Bob will pull through for us, so.
Yay, we'll check with Bob today and see what the timing is. Because it's critical, yeah.
And I know Bob, Bob talked to me yesterday, I think he sent an email. In regards, I'll let Bob respond. I know if the timing is right, Bob, but in regards to the property value freeze, I know there's been some conversations about that. And I know you responded back and said that this might be the right time. So, Bob, if you want mine, if you want to talk about that now.
That'd be great. Would you mind?
No, I'd really prefer to have that discussion offline.
Okay, all right, sounds good. So this is on, yep, property tax, okay?
Yeah, on property values, so, okay, and that was all I had, so.
Okay, that's all Brad has. Anything else, Bob, you'd like to add today?
Madam Chair, in the concern of time, I'm going to pass, but perhaps we can talk about that next week, are there things I wanted to talk about?
Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving on then, we have the Treasurer's Office. Hello again, Beth, how are you?
Good, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Similar to the Assessor's Office, the Treasurer's Office is working on plans for an eventual reopening and what that might look like. So also looking at sneeze guards, stickers, masks, disinfectant spray, because it's possible that the reopening could coincide with the property tax due date. So just a note.
Oh, joy.
Yeah. A note on that, I've received a few questions lately regarding an upcoming property tax due date, which is June 20th. It's actually June 22nd because that falls on a weekend. And just a reminder is that this upcoming due date, that relates to the 2019 tax bill. So that was the tax bill that we sent last November. And so for taxpayers who paid the first half by December 20th, there's a statutory extension so that the second half is due June 20th. So I've received a few questions whether or not that due date has been extended. And to the best of my knowledge, I'm not aware of any discussions of an extension of that due date. Again, that's statutory, it's in the Idaho Code, not something at the county level that we're able to change.
Correct.
So at this point, our office is proceeding with sending reminder notices. So that's just a notice reminding taxpayers that the second half is due. Of course, we'll have messaging on where they're able to pay, pushing electronic payments to the extent possible, but then also recognizing that some taxpayers want to pay in person, so we will implement social distancing at that time. So that's the big update from our office.
So you were saying, I'm looking here, June 20th is a Saturday. And we had some confusion, some folks come in last year because they felt that it shouldn't be, then they shouldn't be charged if it got there by Monday morning, which is not the case. So the messaging or the, you're sending out reminders?
Correct.
Is there something in that reminder that you could speak to specifically about the 20th falling on a Saturday? And although it falls on a Saturday, Monday would be considered late? Or something along those lines?
Yes, Madam Chair, so we will include messaging that for mailed payments to be considered timely, it must be postmarked by June 22nd.
Oh, okay.
So, they could do a walk-in payment on the 22nd, but also the postmark is really the key that drives the timeliness of mailed tax payments.
So why the 22nd if the due date's the 20th?
The statute allows for it to be, if it falls on the weekend.
The statute allows for it to be due date, so, okay, all right.
It's going to be the following week, business day.
Okay, okay, good. You look troubled there, Commissioner Lachlando.
No, not troubled. I'm thinking with so much changing and that some due dates have been pushed back and some haven't, I know Elizabeth is already helping on this, but we needed to do kind of a one cohesive roll-up on dates and really share that all together, that might be something we look at doing.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I agree because there has been inquiries to our office and just when I talk with people about what are the due dates for income tax at the state level, at the federal level, owner's exemption, PTR, the veterans' application. So I do agree, and I think that's a great idea, to somehow consolidate all of these due dates that are coming due, especially around that June timeframe.
I'm looking at Elizabeth in the back here. She's on it, she's like, thumbs up, she's on it. Perfect, yeah. That would be really helpful, yeah, just to have one glance and see where they're lying at this point, yeah. Great, okay, thank you so much for that update, appreciate that. All right, next up, we have the landfill and we have two items on the landfill. Repurpose of funds request and Republic Services request for temporary tipping fee discount for roll-offs. Do we have Kurt with us? Kurt, you want to go ahead and come on up and kind of walk us through this?
Madam Chair, Commissioners. So the first one with just repurposing some funds that were already approved in our budget for this year. I have given an outline for our basic ask. So just a quick overview, the current state, currently, we have a contract with Republic Services to provide our daily construction operations. That ends on September 30th this year and we are bringing that in-house. So we are going to, starting October 1st, be doing the daily construction operations. We already have leased equipment, that'll come out of next year. Our personnel, we've got all that. And that's going to be coming out of next year, so it's around $2 million operating costs for that, those two items next year.
So the overall savings will be to the general public, the overall savings by rejecting the $8 million proposal will be approximately what, by us doing it in-house?
We're estimating between 1.2, 1.5 million for the first year with startup costs and all that. And so basically, our problem currently is just, in this year, we have money set aside already for like our new office building that's, is basically on hold and there won't be time this year to do it. So that'll have to go through the process again, probably it'll be two years out if we still do that. So in that, that was approved, there's $770,000 that we could repurpose to buy equipment this year. So there's some things this year that we'll need to purchase in order to be ready for, like a fuel truck and stuff. So when we get the equipment, we've got to be able to fuel it a little bit and all that stuff. So there's just a lot of little things that we could do this year. And some of the money that we already have, we could do a lot of that. There's just a couple, a couple other items. It's only going to take about $310,000 more that we want to allocate towards that and then we'll be, we'll be sitting really good with all of our equipment.
310.
310.
310.
And so there's a couple places it could come from. We have a contingency line item and we have just shy of a million dollars in there. You know, we have that new office in the budget that we could just put over to the equipment side instead of the other capital improvement. So anyway, basically, the ask today is just allow us to move $310,000 over to our equipment, machinery and equipment budget line item to purchase everything that's needed.
Right, Commissioner Malloy, you understand that this is an enterprise fund?
I do, yeah. And I often, and when I originally read this, I had not finished my coffee, so. I understand they're just asking to shift money to a different line item so they can appropriate the machinery they need.
Yep, correct. Any questions, Commissioner Lachlando? Want to go ahead and make a motion?
Someone at the meeting. Just a quick comment, Kurt. Make sure now that we have this tool available that we're accurately updating and reflecting this in the cost of service study tool.
We are, and that's going to be actually available at the end of the month at the SWAC meeting. We're having a virtual SWAC meeting and so we're going to update.
Okay. Great, really important for citizens and great care, so.
Have you already run the calculations?
Leaving our meeting.
Not fully.
All right, let's go ahead and, Commissioner Lachlando, you want to make a motion?
Make sure I have the number correct, it's 2 million, correct?
No, 310.
Oh, 310, okay. I'm going to authorize a transfer of 310,000 from the landfill office budget line to the machinery and equipment budget line for payment of expenses to begin daily construction activities effective October 1st, 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. All right, next, we have Republic Services requesting temporary tipping fee discount for roll-offs. This does not require a motion, but Kurt, do you want to go ahead and ask or let us know what they're asking for more specifically here?
Yes, Madam Chair, they were, the transfer station in Riddiansdown, so they have roll-offs there that they load for the general public that comes in. And so they were requesting. And so they were requesting those to come to the landfill. And so they can already come to the landfill, so we had some follow-up emails go back on their request, and we haven't received anything back yet. So we worked with it last week, and we're going to get it on the agenda today. But we have no new information, and we don't have a real ask, so that we, we haven't got a response back from Republic on what exactly they were asking, so.
So this will just be rolled over, so we get more information?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Kurt? Comments? Thank you, good work, appreciate that. All right, next up, I need a motion for approval of minutes, Commissioner Laciando.
Yes, Madam Chair, I need to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. Next up, Commissioner Laciando, would you mind making a motion on the grant 2007A? And this is for application to Department of Justice for coronavirus emergencies supplemental funding.
Yes, Madam Chair, I need to approve grant number 2007 and the completion of the online application and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, and this is an award amount for $121,481. All those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. Next up, Commissioner Malloy, I'll need a motion on the agreements. And are there any, before we make a motion on the agreements here, let's go through, is there any, are there any questions on any of the agreements? I know I talked to.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Laciando.
I just would like to kind of reiterate now, because the budget seems, last year's budget seemed so far away, but excited that we're getting moving on the green belt. If we recall, there was a significant request to do some repaving over by Expo Idaho. We determined that was not only fairly expensive, but also maybe not the right timing, given that we may need to readjust those, that greenbelt pathway, given the peanut flood map. But we do have some potential issues, given how badly torn up that greenbelt area is. So really appreciate the work of Scott Cobird and Bruce to come up with a fiscally responsible solution on this.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Laciando. Yeah, the price is significantly less than what it started with when we first came on board as Commissioners. And also, I think we're getting, I talked to Scott yesterday, we're getting a really good value from Central Paving. And it looks like they are either closing up shop in that location, I'm not sure what the situation is, but they've opted to give us a really good deal on this, so Scott's really excited, they're moving forward on it. So any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and consider a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Malloy?
Agreement number 13768 for diversity job software subscription. Is this for posting open positions?
I believe it is, for diversity jobs software subscription, I think that's an ongoing subscription. We don't have Cassie with us, do we, Cassie? I'd have to look back on that, Patrick, to see exactly what it is. When you talk to Cassie, you can probably get clarification. Go ahead, Commissioner.
My name is Debbie, go ahead. All right, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's something obviously that HR uses that.
Correct. Commissioner Laciando?
This is one of the, it's one of the number of different places that they post job openings.
Okay, with that, I'll take up a motion. Commissioner Laciando?
Do you want me to do it?
Sure, go for it.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to, I move to approve the five agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Hey, do you have a second? Yeah, we have a motion to second, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. All right, next up, indigent items, Commissioner Malloy, do you want to make a motion on the indigent services? Weekly items?
Is this, is this where we're going in to hear testimony from the claimants?
No, we will do that at a different time, we have to make our weekly motion.
Okay, so this is not related to that proceeding?
No, we have not had the public hearing since you've been in office yet. We can have Commissioner Laciando make the motion on this, since she's been more involved.
I guess my unfamiliarity would then, would prevent me from making the motion.
I agree, let's go ahead and have Commissioner Laciando make it, and you could abstain from this, if you'd like.
Yeah. All right, Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendations of indigent services staff as listed on the summary cases dated April 21st, 2020, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye. Aye, those nay? Anyone abstain? Okay, Commissioner Malloy abstains. All right, guys, have it, motion carries. Let's move on to procurement. Come on up, Bob, how are you?
I'm well, Madam Chair, thank you.
Good, what do you have for us today?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we have before you this morning a review of some bids that we received and an award recommendation for bid 20045, the Ada County Courthouse Judges Hallway and First Floor Flooring Replacement Project. We received three responses for this project, and we have an award recommendation letter and a review of the bids that we received for your consideration.
Do you want to go ahead so we don't pass things and read everything?
Sure, I'd be happy to read it into the record.
Thank you.
So dated April 21st, 2020, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 20045. Dear members of the Board, Ada County Procurement received three responses for bid 20045. The following are the names of the bidders and the bid amounts submitted. Number one, designer floors, $84,577. Dilabaz Flooring America, $81,945. And number three, wall-to-wall commercial flooring in the amount of $63,762.
There's a discrepancy between the three, yeah.
So after reviewing the bids submitted, it was the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 20045 to Wall-to-Wall Commercial Flooring as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $63,762.
Okay, any comments?
Nope, it was a, sent out to these three bidders, they all had an opportunity to present their best price, and it looked like Wall-to-Wall had the best price.
Same quality?
Yep.
Great, okay, any comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Laciando?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee in award bid 20045, Ada County Courthouse Judges Hallway and First Floor Flooring Replacement, 2020, to Wall-to-Wall Flooring in the amount of $63,762.
We have a second? We have a motion to second, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. Thank you, we have you up here, Bob. So I know one of the things that you're working on right now is a thorough assessment of all of the needs that the various departments and offices have as we start to look at rolling back into businesses somewhat maybe normal or usual, and maybe not. Just to make sure that people are safe, and they have the screens and the tape and all the different products and supplies. How is that looking?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we're searching out supply sources for that. We've, we're meeting with a company called Interstate Plastics this morning at 10 o'clock.
Oh, get you out of here.
To, to help us assess really the needs here at the county, and to be able to put up sneeze guards for all of our clerk locations, DMV locations, and anytime where we're interacting with our clients and the general public to, for protection for staff and clients.
Okay, so trying to expedite that process.
We are, we are trying to get that done as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions for Bob? Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Commissioners.
Get on your call, it's him, right?
Thanks so much.
You bet. All right, miscellaneous items. Let's see. We have ratification of emergency health pay directive extension. This is the emergency health pay that was extended, but this says to May 1st, and I believe we need to actually extend it to May 2nd, because the work week ends on Saturday, and the Sheriff's Office has requested that we make it to the 2nd to finish out the work week. And that adding that one day should only impact ACESO and EMS. Commissioner Laciando?
Do we need to adjust the agenda, or can we just go ahead and do it?
I think you can make it in the motion, just change the date.
Okay.
Any questions?
All right, Madam Chair, I move to.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to adopt the emergency health pay directive extension to May 2nd, 2020.
Okay, we have a second? I can't, I can't hear Commissioner Malloy, so I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Malloy?
Aye.
Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. All right, next up, COVID-19 reimbursement framework discussion. I'm not sure who added this to the agenda. What's that?
I did.
Oh, Steve did, Boinger? Steve, oh, Steve Bethford. I don't, I don't know, no one's here. Anyone here to discuss this? It's up there on the screen. COVID-19 reimbursement discussion, so no motion necessary, so we'll go ahead and move on to 2020.
Just for the public record, Madam Chair, just for the public record, since it's on here, we are awaiting to hear what the Governor's Committee will be putting together for guidelines relating to COVID reimbursement, but we have been leading the way in terms of sending information from the county.
Yep, we have, yeah, we've not heard anything yet, so I'm sure that'll pop back up on our, maybe our next OBM. We're the one following that. All right, any further discussion?
You're on the record?
All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 21st, and the time is 10:05. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session to meet with our Emergency Medical Services District Director. We have all three Commissioners with us, and we have in the room with us, also, Claire in the back, we have. Great, and it looks like we have a few folks on the call. We'll start with you, Siobhan, are you on the call? Was, okay, anyone else, David?
No, I am on the call.
Prosecutor's Office.
Okay, who else?
Siobhan Lewis, Interpol Services.
Okay, who else do we have? Ammon?
Ammon Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
Hey, anyone else up there? Can't see your faces, so you're just going to have to, there's no identifying numbers or names or faces. All right, we'll go ahead then, any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, they're not.
Okay, then, we'll take up new business, and it looks like we're going to open a public hearing on Resolution Number 2510 for sole source contract for the American Heart Association. This is, of course, for the certification cards, correct, Steve?
Correct, yes.
Okay, you want to go ahead and just fill us in on this?
Yeah, you bet. For a number of years, Ada County Paramedics has been the regional training center for the American Heart Association, and this is the first year where the volume of cards that we're purchasing has exceeded the county limits, and so we needed to go for a sole source resolution from the Board. The American Heart Association is, is and has always been the sole vendor. And as a department, we not only provide the training for all of our access partners, but we provide oversight and cards for a number of other regional agencies and local businesses. These cards, depending on, there's four different cards, I don't think I need to go into the specifics, but they range in price between $2.50 and $17. And we do resell them at a markup in order to recoup our administrative fee and our training fee. So in our budget for next year, you'll notice a line item of about $40,000 to $50,000 for the reimbursement of these cards. We've found that being the regional training center has a lot of advantages to us. Not only do we have the staff to do it, but it gives us more flexibility in terms of training our own people and training the fire departments, and so it's been beneficial. It's been a good investment for us, and again, this is the only vendor that's available to buy these cards from. We're, this year, we're finally buying enough that we're exceeding the county's limits for just regular procurement.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Steve on this? I don't think there's anyone else here to testify, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. More discussion or a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion if we're ready.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution Number 2510 as listed on the agenda.
You have a second? Commissioner Malloy? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. All right, next up, Claims Journal, I'll need a motion on the Claims Journal. Commissioner Laciando?
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated April 17th, 2020 regarding EMS expenditure.
Madam Chair, this is one that I have not seen yet. I don't know that I've seen the EMS Claims Journal.
Okay, you want to abstain then on this one? I'll second that then.
I will abstain, I will abstain.
Okay, so I'll second that. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Laciando, aye, Canyon states aye, and Commissioner Malloy abstains, correct?
Correct.
Okay, let's go ahead, personal action forums, Commissioner Laciando?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personal action forums as listed on the agenda, including nine salary increases and the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioners' Office.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. All right, next up, I'll need a motion approval of the minutes, you want to go ahead, Commissioner Laciando?
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair as appropriate to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, I'll need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Aye, guys, have it, motion carries. All right, discussion. Hello, Steve again.
Hello.
Updates from your, from your neck of the woods?
Yeah, you bet. Commissioner Malloy, first of all, let me say, this is the first time I've had the opportunity to meet you, and I look forward to having you out to our shop any time you find, some time in your schedule. We're doing good. We, our employees are on the front line. We have one employee who's tested positive already, and, you know, it's really hard to know, was it a work exposure, was it a home exposure? With so many false negatives and community spread, we don't know. But it's helped us work through the process, you know, if an employee tests positive, then there's a lot of contact tracing to do. So last week, we instituted masks at all times for our personnel, when they're in the ambulance, or when they're in common areas, or they're with each other. They're now wearing face coverings, which our doctor assures us will help mitigate the amount of people that have to then be off until they get a negative test as a result of somebody who's tested positive. They continue to be really nervous, as all healthcare providers are, but we don't have any issues with people showing up to do their jobs. We have, you know, we cycle through people as they get symptoms, and we're averaging about seven or eight employees a day, which actually isn't that much out of the norm for us. We have. We have asked our people to suspend taking vacations, and so we let four or five people off a day on vacation, and so with, with that going away and just sick call, we're holding pretty steady in terms of our ability to run the ambulances. Our call volume, which for the access system, medical calls tends to be about a hundred and ten calls a day, for the last seven days, we're at about ninety-two. We tend to transport about two-thirds of the people who request an ambulance to the hospital. Right now, we're below fifty percent, and so call volume's down, transport rate is down, which for, for Commissioner Kenyon and Lachando, they know that means revenue's down, and I look forward to explaining that to Commissioner Malloy. And so we're just, we're keeping a close eye on it. Our people are doing an incredible job. It is hard to work in gowns, masks, goggles, and gloves, really hard.
Yeah.
And it isn't warm yet, and as it gets warmer, that will be more hard. And so our call volumes, you know, normally, we kind of expect our crews ten, fifteen minutes on scene, ten minutes at the hospital, but with all of the precautions and the cleaning after, the call, we're adding about thirty minutes to each call, and thankfully, that corresponds with a decrease in call volume, because if we had the same call volume with longer calls, we would start to see response time impacts. We are not seeing that yet, and if the volumes remain the same, we don't expect those response times to change. The public has been incredibly gracious, but we know there's an expectation that we've set for ourselves, and right now, we're still meeting it, we're still doing the standard medical care, everybody's having their regular emergencies. It's the low cutie calls that have gone away, and so even though we're running less calls, the people are sicker, 'cause they're the real calls, and so it adds up to a lot of stress on our providers. They're doing a great job, they greatly appreciate the support of, of the board and the rest of the county, they feel it, it's meaningful to them, and we're just taking it one, you know, kinda like you all, like, I think we agree, okay, let's look every week and see what new information there is in terms of when do we decide, 'cause we really still are normal operations, when, if it would be necessary, we're prepared to go into kind of crisis mode operations, and we've got all of those plans in place. We hope it's five weeks of wasted work, that we don't ever need to deploy that, because that would involve, you know, transporting less people to the hospital, potentially taking ambulances out of service, and we're nowhere close to that. We are really business as usual.
So Steve, are you, I know that you kind of talk to different, you know, groups and professionals, folks in your industry, are you doing any projections on, on these, in sustaining the additional protocols that you're taking and what that looks like, and in terms of just extra P P E you may need moving forward?
Yeah, we're, we, we're planning as if this is going to go through the fall, and so we are in the mode, even though P P E is available to be ordered and we are getting plenty in, we're still ordering like we're gonna continue to need at a minimum masks and N ninety-five masks and goggles going forward, and so we-
But that's not a problem in terms of just being able to-
At this point, not. We have, we still have over twenty thousand N ninety-fives, and, and keep in mind, we're supplying multiple people besides just our agency. We have thirty thousand on order that we have been told are in the U.S., but with this non-traditional procurement, I'm sure you've read the stories, there, you, you know, we're trying to ensure what we get, working with Bob and working with Joe and Crash especially, we're just continuing to order as if this is going to continue to be the status quo for us at a minimum through this fiscal year, and if we end up in a situation where we finish this with twenty thousand in the warehouse, that's where we started, and boy, does that feel like a smart decision that was made by other people fifteen years ago, and, but yeah, we're continuing to assume it will be, especially for the healthcare provider, that until there's a vaccine in place, that we will continue to have this kinda, you know, the dance of releasing restrictions, watching rates go up, and then, and then rescinding those restrictions. But our people, long before we had community spread, we, we have taken the assumption that we are not going to put them at unnecessary risk, we're going to assume everybody's COVID positive and treat, treat them appropriately, and then what we're trying to figure out, as you all are, is, okay, what does it start to look like as we have people who do have the antibodies and, and the immunity, and then how does that change the way we deploy and respond? And like everybody else, it depends on who you listen to-
Yeah.
-and when you listen to them, and, and that's, that's frustrating, because our, all of us want to see what does, how will we know when we get to the other side?
Well, we're so far behind on collecting enough data to even do the analysis on that in Idaho, we've only tested like one percent, so we're just now starting to ramp that up, so I think hopefully in thirty days, if not sooner, we'll have more data.
Yeah.
Any questions for Steve?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I have a couple thoughts or questions. So Steve, I know you had kind of assembled force of reserve corps, have you had to tap into those folks at all?
So we, yeah, we have actually just used twelve hours of their time so far, and-
Okay.
So at this point, what our practice, I think as you know, is if we have a number of sick calls, we, we put out a page to offer our regular employees the opportunity to cover that shift. In the past, if they, if we didn't get any takers, we would mandate somebody, 'cause we don't shut down ambulances here. So we would essentially force, you know, through coercion, and of course, they get paid, to come in. Rather than mandating people at this time, we've said we're going to use that reserve pool, who are now in temporary part-time status, to cover those hours. And so on Friday, we used our first reserve temporary person to work twelve hours. They're ready, they have the training, we just haven't had the need yet, which is, we're very grateful for.
Yeah. Any further questions?
Madam Chair?
Uh-huh.
I, I have a couple more thoughts. So one is on messaging, and one is on, just a thought on antibody testing that we could tee up. So one, I think, one of the hardest things for us as, as policymakers, not just as board, but all, all of us across the state, really is, if we do a good job, right, which I think we have, it looks like we overreacted, right? So you guys are not seeing the level of calls, you're, you're not having to make the really terrible choices that we see in New York and New Jersey, where you literally have EMS, you're at the doorstep saying, eh, you don't look sick enough, so I'm not gonna take you to the hospital. So I think somehow, I know Elizabeth may still be in the room, and we need to continue to try and figure out how we, we send that message, that we've done a good job, we're trying to work that dance of what is appropriate for public health, and then how do we slowly loosen up, you know, to reopen business. And then the second thing, that again, we can sort of take offline, but I know there's been a lot of questions about antibody tests and how effective they are, et cetera. I also had a lot of those questions, but I am encouraged that the antibody test that crushed the curve in utilizing is coming out of the University of Washington virology lab, and it's seen some really positive results so far. So I, we might wanna start a discussion about what it would look like to take our, you know, that workforce, especially our paramedics workforce, and look at having that cohort get antibody tested, and we, we can talk about that offline, but I just wanted to tee that up during public discussion.
Yeah, I think that if, if the three of you would be open to it, we've been relying almost exclusively on, on our physician, Dr. Hillvers, who has been in very, he was a coworker of Tommy when Tommy worked at Saint Luke, so they're, they're good friends, they've been in close contact, and he's been, you know, we don't, we're not experts, and so we've been allowing Rob to kind of guide us, he's been very in touch with Tommy and understands the different antibody mediators and what's what. I know that he would be more than happy if we could set up a WebEx with the five of us to talk through where he's at right now and what he's thinking in terms of not only the testing regimen, but also the eventual antibody test. I, I'm certain he would be open to that discussion, and he seems very well informed and, and in close contact with Tommy and, and what that group is doing.
And I know that Tommy, his group has made first responders one of their priorities, so I think that would be great. So with, if that's okay, we'll go ahead and set up that WebEx-
Yeah, yeah.
-and get the ball rolling on that.
I'll work with Judy to get that set up.
Yeah, perfect, yeah, great. Anything else for Steve?
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you all.
Appreciate it. Alright, yeah, let's get that set up and get you guys tested.
Alright.
Super. Thank you.
Have a great day.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, we'll go into recess, and we will reconvene as the Board of Equalization, soon as we get off the record and back on. Okay, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April twenty-first, and the time is ten twenty-five in the morning, A.M. Board of eighty County Commissioners is in session to sit as the Board of Equalization for a hearing. We have nothing on the agenda today, so we're just going on the record to say there's nothing on the agenda, and then we'll go ahead and go off the record. So with that, we'll go ahead and go into recess, and we'll reconvene as Abamoor CID.
You're on the record?
Alright, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, it's April twenty-first, and the time is ten twenty-five A.M. The Board of eighty County Commissioners is in session for Abamoor Community Infrastructure District Number One meeting. We have all three Commissioners with us, also with us, and we'll start with you, Ammon.
Ammon Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
We have Siobhan.
Siobhan Lewis, Indigenous Services.
We have David.
David Rosscheck, Prosecutor's Office.
And anyone else on? We have a couple callers, I don't know who they are. No? Okay. Alright, any changes to this agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, they're not.
Alright, and we have no unfinished business, so we'll move to new business. And Commissioner Malloy, I'll need a motion on the Claims Journal, please.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated April seventeenth regarding Abamoor CID expenditures.
We have motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion carries. Commissioner Malloy, I'll need a motion, please, on the approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minute as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the document on behalf of the board.
Commissioner Lachando, seconds. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion carries. Next, Commissioner Malloy, I'll need a motion on the completion certificate for Abamoor CID project number five and six.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the completion certificate for Abamoor CID number one, project number five and six, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate document on behalf of the board.
Second. You have a motion, a second. All those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion carries. Alright, any general discussion? Anything? Ammon, do you have anything?
Uh, no, nothing right now. We just, we'll get this count wrapped up on these last two projects, and all I have.
Okay, great. Alright, hearing no further discussion on Abamoor CID District, we will go into recess, and then we will reconvene for Indigenous Services.
For Indigenous Services?
Alright, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, or twenty-first. I jumped ahead four days. The time is ten thirty A.M. The Board of eighty County Commissioners is in session for our Indigenous Services hearings. We have all three Commissioners with us, also in the room with, with us, we have, Siobhan.
Siobhan Lewis, Indigenous Services.
And David?
David Rosscheck, Prosecutor's Office.
Is there anyone else on with us? Okay, alright, we're going to start out with a motion to go into executive session pursuant to ADA Code thirty-one eight seven four, and I will ask Commissioner Lachando to make that motion.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn to executive session to hear medical Indigenous applications pursuant to ADA Code thirty-one dash eight seven four, and that the vote to do so shall be by roll call.
Okay, I'll need a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Lachando?
Aye.
Commissioner Malloy?
Aye.
Mr. Kenyon states aye, the ayes have it, the motion carries, we're in executive session. You are up, Siobhan, finally. Thanks for being-
You're on the record in Indigenous Services, general session.
Okay, we're back in open session, and I am going to lean on Commissioner Lachando to make a motion here. You ready?
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask for help along the way, so, so bear with me. Madam Chair, in the matter of special finance case, let me look at my numbers here, is this correct? Lean numbers N one dash two zero one nine 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 four four, Z seven zero nine four two, and ADA dash two zero one nine zero one three nine one eight, is that correct?
I'm, I'm gonna add special case number, finance case number one nine zero three dash zero three nine. Okay?
Perfect. In the matter of this aforementioned case, I make a motion to remove the existing lien with a payment from Miz Waters of thirty-five hundred dollars, with the remaining balance of two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars to be secured by a promissory note secured with a Dodge, two thousand five Dodge Caravan for a payment amount of fifty dollars a month.
Okay, and then the lien will be released, the title will be released upon full payment. Okay, I'll second that. Patrick, you'd like to second it?
I'd second that.
Okay, all those in favor state aye.
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 Ayes have it, the motion carries. Any further discussion? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Carmen. Thank you, Siobhan. If you guys wanna go ahead then and get together after this meeting, you can work out the details. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, everyone. Have a lovely day, stay safe. Let's go ahead and go into recess.
Thank you.
We're gonna convene in legal upstairs.
You're off the record.